Hi, my name is Kylie Nasz.
Hi, my name is Seth Packard.
Hi, I'm Kylie Brah.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to the Groton Board of Ed regular meeting. And it is October 22nd and it's a little bit after 6 o'clock. And as we always do, I would like to start with a pledge of allegiance. And I have not yet gotten used to the flag over there. Mr. Suzuka, would you be willing to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Grenier, I am wondering if you could lead this next part of our agenda, which is the recognition and participation of our visitors and delegates.
Yes, and I'd ask if Mr. Arcarista could come up to the podium because we, I hope, I see you're here. We have a special guest tonight that Mr. Arcarista is going to introduce. Hopefully she'll come up and at least say hello.
Thank you. Tonight, I really have an honor and privilege to introduce to you probably one of the most beautiful people that I've come associated with in my years in education. Not only is she just, like I just mentioned, a wonderful human being, she has a contagious smile, contagious laugh, which you'll see hopefully when she gets up here. That is Senior Karan Connor. So would Karan and her dad please come on up? Karan is going to tell her story. I just want to give you some background about her. She is a senior at Fitch High School. Solid A, B-plus student. She's going to leave us in January. That's how well she's done in her studies. They're moving to Maryland, but she will be coming back to graduate with her class and participate in all the senior festivities I told her today. She will be majoring in social work and she eventually wants to get a doctorate in developmental sociology. Is that correct? All right, beautiful. She's involved in more than words. The Renaissance Club, which has to do with climate at the high school, indoor/outdoor track, and she's part of student leadership. But what she's here to talk to you about tonight is she's just a recent recipient of the Northeast Regional Military Youth of the Year. So here's Karan to talk about it.
I'm really short. So as Mr. Arcarista said, I'm Karan. I'm the Northeast Regional Military Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of America. I started my journey out at local. The local level, I didn't really have to go against anyone because after the process, the lengthy process of doing the application, filling out four essays, getting teacher recommendations, and just a lot of lengthy stuff, a lot of people kind of drop out and give up. I stayed for the long haul. So I won local and then I moved on to state. And because we're the only military-affiliated Boys and Girls Club in Connecticut, I automatically won state. So that was $5,000, a $5,000 scholarship for college. And that allowed me to move on to regionals, which was in New York City. It was my first time ever going to New York City. And it was in June. It was my birthday, too. So I went there and we had to speak in front of judges. I had to have a three-minute speech prepared. I had to speak in front of judges and we also had an interview. So they asked us questions about how the Boys and Girls Club impacted our lives and what have we done to like impact other people's lives. And so, yeah, then we went to this beautiful place. They set it up so it was, it's for wedding venues, but they used it for the Youth of the Year Gala. And we went in and, yeah, we saw it. It was really beautiful. And then we had the dinner. And there was a lot of people there from like big companies. We actually had a bidding for the Boys and Girls Club of America so people could donate. And then they said the winner, and it was me. And it was my birthday. So it was really exciting. It was the best gift I could have got on my birthday. And then I moved on to nationals. And nationals was in Washington DC. I got to speak at a VIP event at the Pentagon in front of a lot of service members, men and women. And I also got a tour of the Pentagon. We were supposed to go to Arlington to Lee Reese, but that wasn't, we couldn't do that. And we had a luncheon the next day. And that's when they said the winners. We also did the interviews at the Pentagon. So we had a luncheon, which was the next day. And although I didn't win National Military Youth of the Year, it was still an honor to go and be there. And do you guys have any questions?
How exciting. And how honored.
Oh, oh, I didn't even say that part for the regional. So the regional scholarship was $40,000 on top of the $5,000. So I have $45,000 from, $45,000 from state to regional. And then at national, although we didn't win, sorry to say, someone passed away, but he donated $2,000 to each runner-up. So in the end, I have $47,000 towards school.
Congratulations.
Wow.
Are you going to the University of Maryland?
Hopefully. Well, I have a lot of schools. That's the top two. So Howard University and University of Maryland.
Fantastic.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we are, and thank you for making us Groton proud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we did just one, we had a, it had been a big, every year we have a big volunteer breakfast, Military Super Tennis liaison. And we were very happy last year that our keynote speaker was Karan. It was just, it was really a delight to see her shine. And I've seen her, I know, I know Joe said it before, but this is, this is the, this is the real Karan because I know her and this is exactly who she is in more than words. She's just a bundle of energy and good, positive thoughts. And she's contributed so much to our high school. I just want to thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And now our second presentation, we'll have another treat. Maybe I'll introduce Mr. Chidley if that would be appropriate. We've got some students who are, you're representing the team, I know.
Yes, I have been here before and it's good to see you all again. And again, I personally thank the Board of Education for the great support of the robotics team at Fitch High School, the Aluminum Falcons. I am, that's almost all I'm going to say tonight. We have definitely the largest team this year. Our success of the past couple of years has made our inspiration going down to the elementary school and the middle schools much more obvious. And we have students that are looking forward to being on this team by the time they arrive at Fitch High School. So a lot are here, but this is not even the whole team. So they, all the black and silver and red shirts in the back, this is maybe two-thirds of all we have. Now, we do have a full team meeting that is going to continue later tonight. So if you'll excuse, right after our presentation, we're all going to mass, leave en masse. But to start with, we want to demonstrate the robot of last year, which won three events in the New England District and went to the World Championships. We'd like to drive it up, but it's getting old and cannot drive straight anymore. But this is Stephen Claudus, operating wave, Stephen. Stefan, excuse me. He doesn't recognize that name. Stefan, wave briefly. He can't hear me. Now, I would take a long time if I were to explain the rules of this past season's game. It is one of the more complicated ones to explain. So rather than talk about it, our students... We got more demo? Is that it or is there more demo? That's it? Okay, yes. All right. So please welcome Anthony, Juliana, and Ingrid, who are going to tell you a bit more about this past season and our upcoming season.
Okay, I'll start. I'm Juliana. I'm the mechanical assembly lead on the team.
Hi, I'm Ingrid. I'm on the marketing and media sub-teams.
You think we have this stuff down?
That's Anthony. He's our marketing lead.
Sorry about that.
So I'm here to tell you, give you a quick synopsis of our team and our 2018 season. We are Fitch High School's First Robotics Competition Team, first standing for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. They are the nonprofit organization that hosts our competition and we are celebrating our 11th anniversary. Our mission is to grow the passion for STEM and First Robotics and to help develop students for success. STEM standing for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, as many of you may know. First Robotics Competition, otherwise known as FRC, is known as the high school varsity sport of the mind. We pursue our mission year-round. Our challenge is revealed in the first Saturday of January and we have six weeks to build, design, program, control, and learn to operate our robot. Emphasis on that six weeks. With March to July being our competition season. We are a well-recognized and respected team in First Robotics with professional-level mentors from EB, Pfizer, and Groton Utilities. Our team strives to impart STEM in life skills to elementary, middle, and high school students. Aluminum Falcon students place into prestigious universities such as Clarkson, WPI, RPI, UConn, Drexel, Brown, RIT, and the list goes on. And here's some photos from our 2017 Pancake Breakfast, which was during our preseason. I'm going to shamelessly plug our Pancake Breakfast this year, which is Saturday, December 1st, in the cafeteria at Fitch from 8:00 AM to 11:00. If you're interested to see me.
So this is our robot this year, as you saw. That's Brah. So there's Brah. He's kind of cropped. So the game this year was called First Power Up. It was video game themed, kind of like 8-bit style. So Brah is about 120 pounds, has six wheels, two motors per side, and a two-speed transmission. There are, there's a DOI driver station for real-time feedback and sensors, onboard compressor for pneumatics, multiple autonomous programs for situational match play, and spring-assisted climbing and cube lift. So basically, here's the rundown of the game. So that scale, see like the kind of like seesaw thing? They, so the robot manipulates those cubes you saw. They're actually milk crates like from school lunches. So those are covered in those yellow coverings and we have to stack those on the scale and the switches. The switches are just lower versions of the scale. So you get points for every second your team has ownership of the scale or the switches, depending on that. There's also a power-up system. So kind of like in video games how there's power-ups. We have boost, force, and levitate. They just manipulate the point systems on the scales and the switches. So, and at the very end of the matches, we have to climb on a bar. The robot basically does a pull-up and it's, and our robot is actually capable of lifting another robot about a foot into the air to score points at the end of the game. So the first event we went to, which was in district, we were part of the New England District, was in Massachusetts. We actually won that event, which is, so out of around 40, 50 teams, we were the first alliance and we won the competition with our friend team 88. And they're the host team that we won with the same competition with last year. So it was really great to win again with them. So now we're really close and it's awesome. So our team, since we are such a big team at this point, we go out of district. So we're in the New England District and we go to the MAR district for one, for the next competition, just for practice. And we get more time to work on the robot outside of those six weeks that were already allotted. So one, so we went to MAR and we won MAR. What? Oh, MAR is the Mid-Atlantic region, so right below us. So MAR, this year was in Pennsylvania. It was, we don't take as many students since it's farther, but it's still a great practice and great experience. And we won it, so that was cool, too. The third event we go to was in Rhode Island. So we actually didn't do as well in placement. So there's a qualification period where you're randomly select, you're randomly paired with people and you have to, the amount of matches you win ranks you. So we were picked by one of the captain alliances and then we won with them. So that was cool. We were actually really good friends with them now. They're a much younger team than us and so it was really great to help them win and be awesome. So after that, we had obviously enough district points to get in, to qualify for the district championships in Boston. So we didn't actually do that well at Boston comparatively to how we had won the three events we'd already come from. So we were quarterfinalists, so we did well. We just didn't do as well. So it was kind of a shock because it was weird. But since we had won those three other events, we had plenty of points to be qualified for World Championships. So we went there. That was in Detroit this year for the first time. So Worlds has split up into six different divisions and we ended up qualifying 20th out of 68 teams in that division, which is awesome because Worlds is like all the best robots. So it was really cool to be there. We were quarterfinalists and yeah. At the Rhode Island event, we won the Innovation in Controls Award, which basically means the control system and how we operate our robot was the best at that event. So we're actually the team with the most innovation in controls awards in the world. I think we're tied up at the top. So that's really cool for us. So we strive each year to have better and better control systems. So, because that's one of the things we specialize in as a team. So after Worlds, that's when our official competition season is over and we move on to the off-season. So we actually hosted Connecticut Championships. It's just an off-season event where we invite as many Connecticut teams as will come. And we hosted that and that was the first time we had hosted an event since 2014. So that was really awesome for us. We were finalists there, semifinalists, my bad. That was really good for like outreach and helping other teams and lots of other things. So then we went to Battle Cry at Worcester Polytechnic Institute. We were semifinalists there. That's a really fun competition because like we prank another team. It's awesome. Then we go to IRI, which is Indiana Robotics Invitational, which is in Indiana, Indianapolis. So that's in the middle of the summer. We only take about 10 kids. It's really prestigious. It's one of like, it's all, it's a lot of the best teams in the world. And we actually won that this year, which was one of the most amazing experiences. I went, it was like amazing because we, we went with two of the best robots this year, like in the world. We got picked by them as their third robot and it was just amazing because we already know one of them since they're in the any district. And it was just, it was just the best thing ever. The last event we go to is Bash at the Beach. That's a, that's in, that was just in October, like, was that a week ago? Two weeks ago. Whatever. So we actually won that. That was really fun. A lot of the team, we know most of the teams that go to that. So it's really good to like hang out with like friends we know from around Connecticut. So this year, our success, we accredit to our access to Pleasant Valley. So thank you so much. The reasons that it was so beneficial to have Pleasant Valley is we have time flexibility because at Fitch you have, we had to leave at like 10 because the genders kick us out, even though we wanted to stay later. So this year, we were allowed to stay as late as we can. We're trying not to stay that late anymore. But, so we could also leave the field setup. I don't know if, we're going to show videos later of how the field is set up. And so we could just leave that there instead of having to put it up, take it down, put it up, take it down in the main hallway, which we'd always struggled with before that. So then we could just practice whenever we felt like it and it was really great for testing the robot. We could also leave up our computers and we wouldn't have to worry about anything getting like deleted or anything happening to our tools. And we could, it was much safer because everything is like spread out because it's in the cafeteria dormitory. So it's just like a giant space instead of a tiny little, essentially like giant closet. So that was really great and we really appreciate it.
Okay. So we do a lot of outreach with the robotics team. One of these is the Groton Town Fall Festival, which is in the fall, you know. At Paquonic Plains. We have a tent set up and we're there all day. And we have a robot, our robot set up so children can go and interact and see the robot in action and parents can learn more. So we really try and get the younger generation more interested in robotics and in STEM. We also have the City Day, which is very similar, which is at, it's at Washington Park in the middle of the summer. It also has, we have a tent set up and the kids come. And sometimes we even let the kids operate the robot. They can move the little, we have a little, just a drivetrain. It's the bare bones bottom. It has some wheels and they can drive that around. So that's fun for them. We also go to the Random Hacks of Kindness, where some of our programmers go to teach kids how to program apps, just very basic programming. And it also gets kids interested in programming, which we have a programming team. In 2017 and this year, we're going to the Crohn's and Colitis Walk, which is this weekend, the 27th. I think we're going to have a tent set up and we're also going to speak to families and children interested in robotics. We visit some of the Groton Public Schools, like Katherine Kolnowski, Charles Barnum, and Northeast Academy. We have a couple tables set up. We teach kids about what the robotics team does and how fun it is. And then we show off our robots. So one year, we had a robot that shot frisbees and we would shoot the frisbees and the kids could go out and grab them. And then the next year, we had a robot that shot little wiffle balls and the kids had fun with that, too. So. And just this summer, we had Aluminum Falcon Robotics Camp, which is when we, Anthony, you can, we had a bunch of little kids play with the Lego EV Mindstorms, which is like little Lego robots that they could program and build. And they had a lot of fun with that, too. It lasted a week. So this is just some pictures from the events. This is Groton City Day. This is everyone who went to the Fall Festival with our robot. A big thank you to our faculty advisor, Mr. Chidley, our lead mentors, Kevin Harrowell and Josh Miller. We have about 18 team mentors. So I would like to thank each of them, not personally, but them as a group, and all the parents and boosters that helped make this possible. Also, our sponsors. Yeah, you're, you're right there. You can't really see you, but you're there. Thank you.
So we're going to show a quick little video. It has some of our matches, ones that we've won, and then some pictures from our outreach events.
Yay.
If you wanted to, you could turn the lights back on, I think. Thank you.
So, yeah. One more thing before we have to rush out. We do have an award or a thank you plaque for you, presented by all the students or the senior students on the team.
Aw. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's wonderful.
That's fabulous. We'll put that up on the wall.
Yes, yeah, it will go up in Central Office.
Sure.
Yes, we will send it up.
Oh, picture.
Oh, for the whole board.
Absolutely.
Can you stand behind us? Yes, you're allowed that.
These are all the seniors that are working hard on essays and finding colleges.
Scrunch in between us.
We're on wheels. We're almost robotic.
We're almost robotic. All right. Amen. Thank you. Thank you, guys. We are so, so proud.
Thank you.
I just have one quick thing to say. I really love the phrase, "high school varsity sport of the mind." I think you should put that in bigger letters someplace because I, I think that's wonderful.
That's a, that's a, that's a First Robotics Competition phrase. So it's, it's well-received by all the First Robotics people.
Right, right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, so much. Once again, thank you for making us Groton proud. But I am going to introduce our next section of our meeting, which is the comments, the comments that...
And then I was on this august body for 12 years, uh, working for our school system. And I've also served on, uh, two charter revision commissions. So I'm sure some of you know of the writer Rudyard Kipling and, or poet or writer. And he, and he has a poem called "If," and I just quote, "If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blaming it on you..." dot, dot, dot. "Yours is the earth and everything that's in it," unquote. So here are my five ifs for our community. If you live in the city of Groton's Districts 2 or 3, you should vote no on the charter revision, uh, changes. That, um, I, I've lost my place here already, the charter revision, uh, because you lose much of your representation by abolishing the RTM. If you believe the Groton Public School System has been growing positively under the current governmental structure encompassing a nationally recognized high school, then you should vote no on the charter revisions. If you believe that our municipal and Board of Education budgets, budgets should be examined carefully, line item by line item, and not by just a gut feeling that they are too high or even too low, then you should vote no on the charter revisions. If you know that a toothless Board of Finance will be elected with no real power to vote on the budget and it is only advisory in nature, then you should vote no on the charter revision. And my last if, if you know that budget referendums will cost in excess of 22,000 each time they are held, that people requiring absentee ballots might not have a fair chance to vote again, and that some Connecticut towns have had to have three or more referendums to pass the budget causing uncertainty, then you should vote no on the charter revisions. Just remember, a vote of no helps Groton grow, a vote of yes creates a mess. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. I was able to say your name, fine.
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see without, without.
Yeah. No, you wouldn't.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jim Streeter. I live at 64 Pleasant Street in Groton. As a form of background, uh, for over 40 years, I have been giving back to our community. Eight years, I served on the town council, two of those as mayor. I've been serving on the RTM on and off for over 16 years. I served five years on the city council, two years as deputy mayor there. I've been on various committees, including several school committees, over the past 10 to 12 years. And I'm presently serving as the official town historian. Based on my involvement, I believe I have a, a good knowledge of our governmental system and our budget process. On November 6th, voters in the town of Groton will be voting on a referendum for proposed changes to our town charter. After personally reviewing these changes, it's my opinion, if approved, these changes will be detrimental to our community and our local government. Unfortunately, the individuals in favor of this charter revision proposals believe that the changes to the charter is the magic pill that will lower their taxes without any impact on services that are provided by the town. They desire to do away with the RTM and replace it with a superficial Board of Finance, which will have no authority. The charter changes will replace the RTM with a Board of Finance. The proposed changes will also provide a yearly referendum for voters to either vote yes or no on both the operations and educational budgets. Doing this will eliminate the checks and balances of the town government and take away the Board of Education's second bite of the apple, should the council cut your budget. Let me give you an example of what could happen. The approved education budget in, for 2019 was 76 million, six, 468,239 dollars. The approved 2019 mil rate was 24.17. If the Board of Education budget stays status quo for next year's budget, and those in favor, if the referendum is passed, if they have their way and vote against the Board of Education budget and request a one mil increase in our taxes, here's what will happen. You will have to cut 3.7 million dollars from your budget. That will bring us back to the budget of year 2011. This does not take in consideration the 2,000 or $2 million loss from the state funding for each dollar that is cut below the minimum budget requirement. This could also result in an additional $7 million cut to the Board of Education budget. The average voter has no idea as to what is included in our budgets, only the bottom line. That, folks, is not good government. Yes, to me, with this particular referendum coming up, the sky is falling with the proposed changes. And because of that, I am asking, better yet, I am pleading that every one of you on the Board of Education contact your friends, neighbors, teachers, and parents of children in our schools to not let our quality education suffer and to vote no to these proposed charter revisions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. That's what I have for a list. Um, Portia.
Portia Bordelon, 159 Chenac-Hossit Parkway. Uh, for full disclosure, I am an RTM member, uh, representing District 2. And I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Streeter and Chaz for coming out, uh, today, um, in support of the vote no. I also agree and second pretty much everything that they have said, that it will cripple, um, this town. Unfortunately, I'm here on other business, though. Um, I have some other concerns. Looking at the proposed CIPs that were presented, um, the middle, the two middle schools, or the 110,000, I believe, was proposed under the CIP for painting the exterior of the front of the buildings. Moving forward, I hope that we are looking at our infrastructure and making sure that after 10 years, such things wouldn't need that much repair in such a short time. Um, I'm not sure of the exact design of that front exterior or what I'm reading as the proposed, um, repair, but that seems to be a bit high, um, for, um, only after 10 years of, um, of building. Um, my other concern still is the, um, at the high school, the Promethean boards, once again, I'm speaking about it because I have not been updated if anything has been done or changed. When I spoke at your last meeting four weeks ago, there were, uh, six out of my son's, uh, classes when I went to open house did not have working Promethean boards. I'm in full support of education. I'm in full support of technology, but I'm not in support of not putting the funding to maintain the structures in our district. Also, I see that the, all these items are on the agenda, speaking of the lead, once again, speaking about that, no level of lead in any water should be acceptable. I spoke with some other districts, um, where, where friends of mine live where they had the issue. And I feel as if we should be presented with a map of each spigot that's been tested. What was the outcome of the level? And what is that allowable level number that you guys are getting from the state ledge light? Because in my opinion, no, uh, no a level is allowable. And that was what the dis, their district went with. So I think in full disclosure, we should know what faucets are spitting out allowable levels. I think that's fair for parents to know as well as the students. Looking at the SBAQ scores, recently I received those and, um, they're concerning. Unfortunately, I can't see the elementary scores because I was looking at my son's. On the middle school level, yeah, if you're not familiar, there's below the level, uh, working towards or whatever their wording is. And, you know, meets or exceeds basically, or there's meets and then maybe even exceeds. I don't have it in front of me. We were barely in the approaching level in some areas at, at West Side. Very concerning. As a district, we were a little bit higher, but we weren't in that upper level of meeting. So my next question is, what are we doing again, as I'm advocating for support services in our district to make sure our children are college ready? I'm fully aware of the IB program up at Fitch High School and I'm all for accelerated education and college, college readiness. But if the middle school level is not producing college level scores, I'm concerned about the progression of our district with all these accelerated classes when I'm also a graduate of Fitch and we had AP and did just fine. It's great to have accelerated programs, but you have to fund the lower level programs to make sure children are able to read and write at the level, on grade level, not meeting, not, not approaching grade level. So I just encourage the district to, to look into that and make sure that we are putting the money where, where we think that we should be putting it in the appropriate areas. Back to the lead issue, the fieldhouse and the concession stand. Once again, I spoke at the last meeting and I have not been contacted as of yet as to any of the status of any of these.
You have just a minute left.
Yep, any of these, um, structures or any of these items. But it is very frustrating and concerning. And according to some students at Fitch, the Promethean boards are still today not working. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, uh, ready? Um, Rita.
Um, Dr. Guneer, could you, um, maybe find out from the high school, how many Promethean boards are working or not working?
Sure.
And what is going, you know, what is the plan to get them all up and running?
Sure.
Thank you.
Katrina.
Um, I'm asked, uh, Bordelon.
Yeah.
Could you email me, um, you referenced other districts regarding no allowable lead level? Could you email me those districts in the context, the people you spoke to? Thanks. Also, I'm sorry, I can only ask. I'm not supposed to have a conversation. Also, um, you mentioned the CIPs and I know those haven't been distributed to the public just yet. So I'm wondering if perhaps if you have any other concerns, you could, um, write the questions up and send them to Sam and also save your.
Your meeting. That's right.
I understand that. Yeah.
Oh, CIP for this, I mean.
Yeah. Um, also, I think that there's a Board of Ed meeting with the RTM Education Subcommittee where we discuss the CIPs in particular. So I look forward to having that conversation at that meeting. And in the meantime, I'll, um, look forward to, maybe you could see, send me on those questions to Sam.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments? All right, moving on. Student reports. Hello, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, my own. I'm assuming I'm on. All right, here we go. So updates from last meeting. Uh, Thursday, October 11th was parent teacher conferences. Uh, a parent had the option to go to any of their child's teacher they wanted to. They'd go to their room and sit down and have a quick conversation with their teacher. Uh, also, last week was Spirit Week. It was my last Spirit Week at Fitch High School. Uh, it was a very good week. It ended with the pep rally where I'm glad to say the seniors won the class cup for having the most students dress up throughout the week. Uh, but I was very disappointed because the sophomores beat us in the class tug of war at the pep rally. So congratulations to them, but I'm still very disappointed. And this past Saturday was the marching band competition. It was their last big fundraiser before London. And also, on the senior class, we are currently selling homecoming tickets and they are $25. Also, uh, we are going to be doing our annual butter braids fundraiser, a couple order forms. If you know anybody that would like to order them, please feel free to reach out to me. And I'll send it over to Addie about the juniors.
Uh, so the juniors are going to sell Fitch sweatshirts until this Friday and I designed it, just so people want to buy it. If you want to buy it, that'd be cool. Um, we're also selling bells at upcoming, uh, Fitch home football games. And we are selling chocolate, um, at the beginning of November. Uh, sophomores are also selling chocolate during the end of October into the beginning of November. And freshmen had their first class council meeting this past Wednesday.
All right. Student leadership. Uh, student leadership is sponsoring an event. They are going to have a bus supply kids to go to the NFA, the Fitch NFA football game at NFA. Uh, the ticket is $5 to go and it's being chaperoned by Ms. Korazaka and, uh, Ms. Estraja. So they're very excited. They're pumping it up. Also, uh, the annual vol, men's volleyball brawl, uh, tournament. There has not been a date yet set for that, but the girls' powder puff game has been scheduled for November 16th.
Uh, the homecoming dance is going to be this Saturday and it's, um, by the senior class, as Dan mentioned. The theme is Harvest Moonlight. Yes? Okay. So that'll be fun.
The ASAP test will take place this Thursday. Uh, students are asked to please sign up in the Career Center ASAP. Of course, uh, the test needs to be ordered. Any student looking to attend the milit, uh, join the military is encouraged to take it.
There will be a blood drive this coming Wednesday and it's put on by the Kietts. So any student who's 17 or older can participate.
The FAFSA night will be held on Wednesday, October 24th. Uh, this is where parents and their child can go, uh, get information about filling the FAFSA form. Uh, it is by appointment and you sign up on the appointment, uh, via the Fitch website and they will tell you all the things you need to bring in order to help fill it out.
Uh, the quarter is going to close, uh, November 7th. So a bunch of students are going to be very quickly doing all the homework they missed.
Uh, on November 9th, uh, that is a Friday, uh, is the Fourth Annual Veterans Day Luncheon. Uh, this year they will be honoring Lance Corporal William Hart. You are asked to RSVP by calling Ms. Hodge at 860-449-7200, extension 1107. Leave a message by November 6th, 2nd to secure a seat. And the lunchtimes are 10:50 to 11:18, 11:18 to 11:46, and then 11:46 to 12:14, 12:14 to 12:42. Those are the four lunchways, so it goes along with the students lunches. So there will be student volunteers there.
Uh, November 10th, there is going to be the Sixth Annual Music Boosters Craft and Vendor Fair where local artists and vendors can come and sell their, uh, supplies or art in the Fitch Cafeteria from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
There will be a blood drive this coming Wednesday, and it's put on by the KIET, so any student who's 17 or older can participate.
The FAFSA night will be held on Wednesday, October 24th. This is where parents and their child can go get information about filling the FAFSA form. It is by appointment, and you sign up on the appointment via the Fitch website, and they will tell you all the things you need to bring in order to help fill it out.
The quarter is going to close November 7th, so a bunch of students are going to be very quickly doing all the homework they missed.
On November 9th, that is a Friday, is the Fourth Annual Veterans Day Luncheon. This year, they will be honoring Lance Corporal William Hart. You are asked to RSVP by calling Ms. Hodge at 860-449-7200, extension 1107. Leave a message by November 2nd to secure a seat, and the lunchtimes are 10:50 to 11:18, 11:18 to 11:46, and then 11:46 to 12:14, 12:14 to 12:42. Those are the four lunchways, so it goes along with the students' lunches. So there will be student volunteers there.
November 10th, there is going to be the Sixth Annual Music Boosters Craft and Vendor Fair, where local artists and vendors can come and sell their supplies or art in the Fitch cafeteria from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
What was the date? I missed the date on that one.
What?
The date.
Saturday, November 10th. And an update on athletics. Football is 4-2. Boys soccer is 6-6-1. Girls soccer is 1-11. Girls field hockey is 8-8. Girls volleyball is 9-7. Boys cross country is 7-2, and they placed third at the conference championships. And girls cross country is 4-5, and they finished ninth at the cross country championships. And also, congratulations to field hockey player Zoe Persch. She became the school's all-time winning scorer this week.
Ooh.
That's it for us.
I just wanted to weigh in, Dan. On November 9th, actually, Dan has been part of planning the ceremony. It'd be a very special Veterans Day. I was contacted last year about a member of the class of 1981, William Hart, who joined the Marine Corps, was subsequently stationed in Beirut, Lebanon, and there was a terrible terrorist attack. As you might remember, they blew up the Marine barracks, and Mr. Hart, William Hart, was killed. So the students have, we just found out, I found out last year, that a member of the class of 81, he actually has some very good friends in the district. Mr. Gaston, who is a custodian at Northeast Academy, was actually his best friend. It was just a kind of interesting research that we did, and then Dan helped plan the ceremony, and we had some students who have researched the event, the 1983 Marine Corps barracks terrorist attack. And so we are going to honor Mr. Hart, who was a member of the Marine Corps, and we're going to try to get as many friends and relatives as possible. But I think, help me out, Dan, 10:20. I'll get the details out in the board notes, but it'd be great if some board members could come, because this is really special, and we've had a plaque that they were going to mount in the hallway where there's some other service members who gave their lives, what was surveyed in the military. But it'd be a really interesting event, and then please stay for a nice lunch at Falcon Cafe. Thanks. That's all.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
I just wanted to assure members of the public that the work is continuing on the consolidated middle school. Mr. Kilpatrick gave a report on 2020 overall, but we have been working, actually, Mr. Kilpatrick and I and the two middle school principals, we've been meeting regularly with the architects. So that planning, the design planning, very specific design planning, has been continuing, and we are on track. And as far as everyone is concerned, we believe the new middle school will open in the fall of 2020. The second thing is, the board knows about this, but I don't think we've spoken publicly about the last Department of Defense Education Activity Grant that we received. So I'm going to ask Ms. Austin to talk a little bit about the elementary and high school aspect, and then I'll talk about the IB.
So this is, so this is actually our fourth Department of Defense Education Activity. The first one we received when Mike and I first got here on technology. The next one was the Million Dollar Literacy Grant, which we continue to do our work with Teachers College, Columbia University. And then the third one was in mathematics, and this is with STEM and science. So we're very excited about it. One of the overarching pieces to the grant is to be able to have embedded coaching and professional development around the NGSS standards, science standards. We've been working with the Dr. Reckenberg at CRAK, and really, she has been instrumental in bringing teachers together around the state. Even a couple of our own have worked with her to create this dynamic curriculum. And so that will be part of the grant, a major part. Another major part is outdoor STEM, and we'll have after, before, and after-school enrichment, a summer program, and that's really to facilitate at the early elementary level that real desire, that, you know, excitement around the area of STEM. And also, the idea of outdoors and all the things that we can do outdoors, from the gardening and to, you know, rocketry. So we're very excited about that. And the third piece was actually Dr. Guneer's idea. So I want him to be able to talk about the third idea, which is for the high school.
We proposed to institute the career-related program through the International Baccalaureate Program, which would allow students, not necessarily college-bound students, to participate in a really a terrific program in either engineering, nursing, business, or culinary arts. And so we are training our teachers, and we're going to, we have to, like all IB programs, we have to apply, but we're pretty confident that we'll be awarded recognition. And then what will happen is students will be able to take a four-course sequence and then just two international baccalaureate classes and get an IB engineering certificate, an IB nursing, business, culinary arts certificate, which will be really a nice entree into the world of work or into colleges, technical schools, if they choose so. We are very excited about that, and we're just getting started. We're hiring a grant manager, and we'll give updates as we go along. So that's that. And then the last thing is, I know we sent the calendar, I hope we did, we sent the proposed calendar to the board.
Hopefully, you can spend two hours on this.
Just for the information of the board and the public, there is a regional calendar that put out by LEARN, and we have followed the regional calendar with just two exceptions. The first one is, the regional calendar has students starting school on the 28th of August. We are proposing, certainly, Ms. Austin and I are proposing, that there be three days of PD to begin with, so the students would actually begin on the 29th. So that's one deviation. And then the second one is, this year, and I think last year, instead of having half-day before Thanksgiving, we had the whole day off before Thanksgiving. Those are the only two changes. So if we do that, the school year would end on Friday, the 12th of June, and we would have five days, I say with some trepidation, five days before graduation. But, you know, if we had to change graduation, we'd have to change it. But it is the same regional calendar. In other words, regional PD days are the same, April vacation is the same, Christmas vacation, winter vacation is the same. So in every way, we would conform with all the other schools in Southeastern Connecticut, with the exception of starting students a day later by giving us the three PD days and then Thanksgiving. So we can, I thought I would just put that out there, and then next month, vote on it.
Rita.
I remember last year, we received this, and I made this suggestion, since Labor Day is so early, and it's even earlier next year, that the students come back to school on the 3rd and not go to school for two days, and you start your, the PD day. I believe we did it on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Right.
And I would like to see that changed again. I think it was very positively received by teachers and parents and students to start the day after Labor Day. There are some times when Labor Day falls later in September, but since this is so early, September 2nd, I'm making this suggestion that you revise this and then revise the end of the school year again. And I know we did this last year, and it was a little different than the LEARN calendar, but I don't think it caused any problems.
So if we did that, and I share your desire to start after every day, it would mean that the last day of school would be the 16th.
Yes.
And then maybe we would just make graduation the 26th.
Or you could have graduation the 23rd, or have it on a Monday rather than a Friday, or, you know, as long as it, I believe the community was that it's connected to a weekend.
Yes.
So whether it's a Friday or a Monday, people, family would be coming in.
Right.
So that, it's my suggestion, only because I know how well it was received this year. It received a lot of very positive comments about that, not having the students start at the very end of August just for two days.
Yep.
One day. Gretchen.
I agree wholeheartedly with Rita. I think having the three-day weekend come up, it gives them a chance to have that long weekend with their kids before putting them in school. I've always found, as a parent, it was difficult to get them in that day and a half before Labor Day and then three days off, and I think it's more consistent for the children.
I think I would be in favor of that. I don't want the 26th as a graduation date. I wouldn't run the 22nd.
Right. Me too.
Which is a Monday, so it's around a, around the weekend.
Or even the Saturday morning, some of the towns do Saturday morning.
Well, Saturday doesn't help us in terms of the days. We need to pick up, because you would end on the 16th, so 17, 18, 19 would be snow days. The way these winters have been going, I don't think, I don't think three is sufficient. I think the 26th, I'd actually be pretty comfortable with eight days. We had eight days last year. I just wanted to know that if, God forbid, there were more than those days, we cannot go into July. You know, so, yeah, I'm with you. I-
Well, would this be a way for us to rethink, like, whether, do our kids stay in school for Veterans Day and have ceremonies? I mean, that would be another way of adding a day. I mean, obviously, I think Election Day, we can't.
Well, we could do Election Day if some of the polling places were moved.
But I think that would take a longer effort than just the 20, 19, 20, 20 calendar. So.
Yeah, you could do that. You could certainly do, there are school districts that have school that day.
And Columbus Day.
And Columbus Day.
Well, Indigenous People Day.
Yeah. They get, both of these are a little bit dicey because they're written into contracts, but we could work around that. I think Dan had a comment, if you're willing to recommend.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, if I'm looking at the calendar right now, I know it's like this this year, but April break is during Good Friday this year, and I don't know if you could move April break to the previous week. That would get you a day right there.
That's the problem with the regional calendar.
Right.
That all the other school systems in Southeastern Connecticut will have that particular week off, because we've all sort of agreed that the third week of April, but you're right, that's a day.
Yep. Is it my understanding that the Connecticut statutes now say that you don't have to have regional calendars?
That's right.
Correct. It's just it's expensive, because you have to run the buses. We still have to get the kids to Ledger and all the special ed kids.
So that's a financial thing.
And for parents who teach in other districts, it's nice to have the same week off.
I'm just saying that we're not, no longer mandated, not that schools do that.
Correct.
I guess I wouldn't mind to have people kind of think about those two days, Veterans Day and Columbus Day, what does that mean?
Maybe bring it back to a COW.
And bring it back to a COW, so that we can have, like, long thoughts about that.
Okay.
Okay? We're going to bring it back to a COW. So just write down your comment.
So just a second.
Okay. If you can make a note of that, because we'll bring it back to the committee, the whole. Yeah, once again, let's make your, you know, write that down, and let's bring it down to a committee, the whole. All right. So we are now on to Ms. Susan Austin.
We have discussed as a board at the COW the results of our S-BAC, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium Assessment, that's given to all students in the state of Connecticut, grades three, four, five, and six, seven, eight. But I wanted to give you kind of an overview of our results as a district and also that of the SAT, because I know you're very interested in how did we do compared to Connecticut? How did we do compared to our local neighbors? How are we in our DIRG and as an alliance district now? And I thought this could set the stage prior to our principals coming out on November 13th for elementary with their action plans, because it's not just how did we do as a measure, but we actually drill down to each and every student to see how they did and how they actually met their growth. Did they all grow? And that's what we want for our children to do. So the principals will, the elementary principals will come to the COW on the 13th of November, and then the middle school will come with their action plans on the 19th. So we will drill down in the data. This is just going to give you kind of a broad perspective to take a look at and to share with the community. So in this first slide that I have, you see the blue represents Connecticut, and the green represents Groton. The ELA is on the top, and the math is below. One of the interesting things that we noticed was that in the eighth grade, both in that grade level, the eighth grade from last year who are current ninth graders, were above the state goal in both ELA and mathematics. It also happened in fourth grade, and they were pretty neck and neck in fourth grade. In some cases, you'll see the state, they'll outperform the state in ELA, but they do a little less for math. So it's not always that you see a cohort of a group of kids who outperform in both areas. So that's, we look at kind of the shape of the data and how the kids are performing in relationship to the state. Now, the next slide that I show you is about the cohort. It's a rough cohort. I've talked to you about how the state now really matches kid for kid and looks at their growth, and we're kind of waiting for some of those results to come. Children have been able to receive their targets, and parents have received information regarding S-BAC. So if you look at the rough cohort, this group here in ELA, where you're eighth graders, and you look at the stair steps, this is the kind of growth we'd like to see going through the middle school in, you know, all cases. And if I move this over just a little bit, the same things happened in mathematics as well. So from the time they were sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, they made growth, and that's what we want to see. It doesn't always happen that way in these rough cohorts. And I say rough because we do have transient children, we have military families that come and go, so it's, this is not an exact match. But we will be getting that kind of data to have a better look at that. And you just kind of look at the shape of the data. You see some, in some cases, in this group where you have sixth grade, and this has happened to us periodically, that sixth grade, whether it's that transition year or whatnot, both in ELA and math, they did, they went down. So that is a concern, and we certainly look at that, we look at the individual students, and that's where the principals work with their data teams to create their improvement plans and their action plans. Now, this is the DIRG results for ELA, for S-BAC. So if you notice in this case that we outperformed all other school districts in our DIRG in ELA. So you can see that with the results of 58% of our students meeting and exceeding the In mathematics, we were up at the top as well in our DIRG. We actually came in second, and someone came in right with us in second place. So, you know, we are looking to really be competitive in our DIRG. Those are other district reference groups that have similar economics, you know, similar, you know, I guess-
Socioeconomics.
We're going to shift over, that's why I changed the color, so we're going to shift over and look at SAT. We're gonna shift over, that's why I changed the color, so we're gonna shift over and look at SAT. And this SAT result for ELA shows that Groton is very competitive in our DIRG. They actually came in second in the DIRG for the SAT results, and we've noticed that our SAT averages have increased each year, too. We would like to say, and I know that Matt Brown and Joe Arcaris have come to you with this, but we would like to say that we're starting to see some significant improvement in this area. And we do know that by dropping the basic classes and expecting more rigor for all kids, I just did a walkthrough where I walked through honors classes, and I would say that those classes mirror our community, and kids are really doing quite well. So, that has really helped support, I think, the growth here. And in mathematics, with our DIRG, we actually were, took, you know, were really a leader in our DIRG, and the results were, you know, the first in the, in the group. As an alliance district, now, this isn't all the alliances, there are some alliance districts, there's a chart that kind of looks like this. It's quite, quite amazing. There were a couple smaller districts that outperformed us in the alliance, but these were ones that were more like ours. So, you can see we're in the red and the pink, looking at the ELA and the mathematics. And so, again, very competitive as an alliance district. And then, local SATs, I know you're interested in communities that are our neighbors, so we wanted to take a look at those. And, you know, we're kind of neck and neck with Killingley. We've outperformed places like North Stonington, and, I'm looking to see. And Norwich Free Academy, so. So, do you have some questions?
I do. Susan, I would really like, rather than these charts with the percentages, I'd like to see some of the numerical scores, you know, out of eight hundred. What, what is the average, what are the students scoring?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think we did present that.
Right, but I meant for, for the general population, I think more people are used to thinking of it as, as being, you know, in eight hundred, are they scoring five forties, or?
They're above the, the state average. And I'm, I don't wanna mess this up, but it was like five twelve in mathematics.
Five oh four. So, if, if you look at your SAT chart here, and it says the number of, the percentage of students-
Right.
That would be the percentage of students who scored at least five oh four on the, on the L, on the, on the verbal portion, and...
I thought it was five twelve in the math.
It was higher in math? That's unusual.
You know what, I'll, I'll get that, too, but, yeah, that, that's, that's a, probably we should have put at the bottom. We'll make that clear. That, what the, what the so-called meeting the expectations number was.
And for the state.
Yes.
And so, they're no longer, the essay's optional now?
The spring one, yes. No, it's not optional. The spring one is the one the state pays for as part of the statewide testing, and it's only math and verbal.
Right, but the, I thought the essay was no longer, they-
It's not mandatory, so when they take it at other times, they can do it.
They can do it.
That's right.
Right. And there are many schools now that are not even requiring the submission of the SAT and ACTs.
Graduate schools are not even doing GREs anymore.
Okay, so, thank you.
I have one more thing.
Oh, please, I'm sorry, oh, yep.
So, we have, let me just get this up. In collaboration with Children First Groton, the town and the city of Groton, we are going to have our fourth annual Healthy Development Summit on Infant Children and Adolescent Mental Health, and we have a guest speaker. Let me just see if I can pull this down a little bit. Janine Fitzgerald, who is going to do a talk from cradle to career, teaching children to cope. And then we will be having breakout groups, so that parents can have focus groups, parents, educators, the community can have talks around what does it look like for preschoolers, elementary students, all the way up through high school students. And so, we're really looking forward to that. We'll be getting the word out, there's gonna be a registration right on our new website. And we're hoping to have many people come out November fifth, and from five thirty to about seven thirty. And part of the presentation will be from this Janine Fitzgerald, and part will actually give us time, like we did last year for safety and security, to really have a two-way conversation with people in our community about helping our kids to cope, so.
Once again, thank you so much for your leadership on these, on these summits, and really kind of beginning to really kind of talk about the, the issues around mental health, and how they impact our families and our students, and how it impacts our children's ability to be able to perform in schools. And beginning that conversation about how to, what are the tools do our teachers, our administration, our district needs in order to help move all kids forward, so.
And we certainly do appreciate the support from our Board of Ed. This is not just a Groton situation, this is a state and national phenomenon that we're all very concerned about. And I just, the alliance, being part of the alliance districts, we have provided a lot of free professional development. And so, I took a core group of educators from around this district on Friday to building trauma-sensitive schools, and there were excellent guest speakers there. And the group met afterwards to talk about what are our next steps. So, we really are on to something there to help support our teachers, our families, our children better. So, in dealing with these things that they deal with.
All right, moving on to Business Manager. How are ya?
Great, how are you?
Good. How was the vacation?
Oh, it was good.
Awesome.
Could you show any slides?
I don't have any prepared. Do you have, so this is a tax laundry, good one. Ten eleven. Yes. So, our object code summary through October eleventh is showing that we are on target to, to hit our budget. Forty-three thousand, one forty-two is our current unexpended budget amount.
Wow, that's a lot of money!
Less than point one percent, so we're, we're really close. The main drivers on that number are, from a positive standpoint, we're replacing some retired teachers, and a reduction of one bus. On the negative side, the addition of the Apex software, and our under-budget on propane and diesel fuel brought it down. So, we're currently trending pretty close to budget.
So, you've accommodated all those unexpected deficits that we had?
Yep, yep.
Jay?
So, with regard to the diesel and the propane, is this the, what you project will be over through the end of the year? Or is it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, but based upon our, the price that we locked in at, in our anticipated use.
Anticipated, okay. Because I thought the whole idea was this propane was gonna save us money. And I see we're already trending in the wrong direction.
Well, I think we, we didn't anticipate, I didn't anticipate, the additional school coming on West Side came on just this year, and so that got up through things a little bit out of balance.
All right, any, wanna move on to the, oh, Katrina?
Um, what is the, our site budgets are being funded seventy-five percent, correct?
Well, they're, they're authorized to spend seventy-five percent of their site budget.
Excuse my turn.
We're not, we're not planning to touch the other twenty-five.
Okay.
Planning.
They're authorized to spend seventy-five percent of their site budget?
That's right.
What is twenty-five percent of all the site budgets? I know we had that number at some point, and I'm sorry, I can't remember what it is.
It is around, I just had it this afternoon, one, I think one fifteen twenty.
Okay, thanks.
Not a lot.
Yeah, I was just seeing if there was, way to boost it up. I don't know.
Yeah, okay. And do you wanna go through the insurance report? Do you have anything to add?
Uh, the insurance report, as a cash flow forward.
Yep, maybe.
So, this one is, it's through August, and it shows that our total cost of a million eight ninety-eight, six ninety-five, in comparison to a budget for those two months of two million sixty-one thousand. So, we're currently trending eight percent below budget, which is good. To give a little perspective, last year for those two months, we were at a one million nine sixty-four, so we're, we're trending a little bit lower than last year at this point. But it, they don't, they don't move linearly, so it's not necessarily going to continue in that fashion.
Could you repeat that? The total cost last year at this time was one million nine something?
One million nine sixty-four, two sixteen.
And that gave us an overage last year of, of, is it the same amount? The variance, in other words?
Yeah, I don't have that, we, we had a lower budget, so we were actually trending, we were trending a little bit higher last year as a comparison of budget.
Okay.
So, we're, we're in a little bit better shape.
But at this point, we're about a hundred sixty-three thousand to the good-
To the good.
In, in that account.
That's right.
Okay, so.
Another rolling in the dome.
Please, God, that continues.
All right, if I don't have any questions, let's move on to the Director of Buildings and Ground. Hello, Sam, how are ya? How was your vacation? I'm sorry. Just out of that.
So, the first thing that I'm gonna report on is Groton twenty twenty, as Dr. Green already reported with, in a meeting continuously with the architects on the middle school project. And our last meeting, it's getting down to details now, and our last meeting was actually on classroom layout and that sort of thing. So, that continues on. And of course, with the stalling of the elementary schools, waiting for the referendum to come up, I believe it's December eleventh?
Correct.
Yes.
Eleventh, on the elementary schools as to, and I don't exactly know what, how they're gonna phrase the question, but basically, it's a question of whether the public wants to support these schools built as new, which is less expensive, or renovated as new, which was in the original referendum, which is more expensive, so we'll find that out in December.
And by the way, that's on the agenda tonight. I have slightly different opinions than the town is asking to take a motion.
Okay. The second item is the water test update. I went to the, to the Department of Health on October tenth with the August and September results that I had received. And on that meeting, some recommendations were made by the person that I met with at the state level. For instance, the one item in Claude Chester School is the fountain that's in the back wing, or the furthest wing in the building, that tested above the limits, and it was secured or shut off previously, and it has remained that way. And her recommendation is to actually remove or replace that fountain, and also the line that services it from the main line that's in that section of the building. So, our, our plumber will actually be working on that. In addition to that, at Fitch High School, there is a lavatory that has a sink, and that sink is not turned off, it's for, used for hand washing, so there's a sign on that that states that it's not drinking water. And the second place was the concession stand, which is the old fieldhouse. And while the second tests that came back on the fieldhouse were below the, the action levels, we decided not to turn that back on yet until we actually changed some faucets in that area and some piping that is exposed to reduce it, while it's below the level, we wanna reduce it as much as we possibly can in that area. So, we're gonna do both of those, the concession stand, the fieldhouse, and the lavatory in the twenty-eight hundreds wing. And then, once those things are done, then we'll retest and get back to the state and get her reflections on that. The third item is the indoor air quality issues at Northeast Academy. As, as you know, it was reported that we had mold in, in the building. We've had, I actually met with Legislite Health District on the twelfth of October with regard to the lead and the water issue, and while I was there, we also spoke about the Northeast Academy issue. And at that time, I, I briefed her on the steps that we were taking with regard to hiring a engineering firm to look at the HVAC system, and of course, Mystic Air Quality to do any air testing that may be necessary as we move forward with this process. The person at Legislite was, as, as a matter of fact, I, I met with her again this morning, because a letter went out on Friday, I believe, to the parents at Northeast Academy. And I had hoped to see her before that letter went out, to see if she had any comments to make with regard to that letter, but she was busy that day, so we, we met this morning. And she thought that, that the results of the tests that Mystic Air had done were captured in that letter that went out to the parents. She also indicated to me that she's had a couple of phone calls from concerned parents from, from Northeast Academy, that she was gonna have returned calls, she was gonna return calls to them in the near future. I am presently waiting for a proposal from Fosse O'Neill Engineering Firm in Manchester to determine what they wanna do with the HVAC system. They're also gonna look at structural issues, and also look at the site, meaning looking at the topography and how that flows. Most everybody's been to Northeast Academy, so that flows downhill to where the school is. And they're gonna make some determinations as to what we might need with regard to additional drainage, perhaps. Well, with the HVAC system, again, it, it's too, too early to say, but that HVAC system is not taking, the, the biggest concern is the humidity in the building. Mold can't grow in less than sixty percent humidity, but we've had humidities quite a bit higher than that. And the HVAC system does not take the humidity out of the building at a rate that is acceptable to, acceptable to any of us. So, they're gonna be looking at what we might be able to do with regard to that. In addition to that, I've had meetings with the custodial staff. They've done some cleaning in Mystic Air's, Mystic Air Qualities Report. They made recommendations with regard to cleaning a particular room in the storage room in the library. Our custodial staff did that following EPA recommendations. In addition to that, the HEPA act, which is a very fine filter system, so that we don't spread the mold spores around. So, also, in working with the, the cleaning staff is really the nighttime staff in, in the schools, and I met with that custodial staff at Northeast Academy, and asked them to call me directly if they find any conditions that they think might be mold. And so, they, they, they weren't really, they were a little surprised by that. So, they asked a custodial supervisor, is he serious? Does he really want us to call him? And the custodial supervisor said, yeah, if he, if he told you to call him, he means to call him, whether it's at six o'clock or ten o'clock, because I want to, if, if- Because I want to, if we find any more mold, we want to, I'd like to observe it personally, and also take photographs of it as we find it. And then we can clean it, which is the recommendation of the EPA. And are there any questions?
Jay, the question.
So I know we discussed at the last, I believe it was the full Board of Ed meeting, about the, our disappointment with the way that Northeast Academy and Konaski were designed and built. It was alluded to earlier in the evening, echoed our concerns from the last meeting. About, as beautiful as they are, that decorative wood is going to yield a hundred and ten thousand dollar refurb job after ten years. And I know you said you were going to talk to the architects to make sure that that sort of thing doesn't occur in the future, that we're building buildings that are sustainable, and not just an architect's dream, that then we get saddled with the cost later. So I hope that they're going to keep that in mind as we're, you know, I know they're coming to a close pretty soon on the middle school. In terms of NEA, the air quality, as we sit in a room here, which is relatively new compared to the town hall at the bottom of the hill, we have an industrial strength dehumidifier, because this room, every summer, becomes unbearably moist, yielding at least mildew, if not mold. And this building has not been repaired, even though this has been going on for many years. But at this point, I guess I don't understand, with all the technology we have, why we can't have sensors determine where the, you know, which rooms are the worst, and why we can't at least put auxiliary dehumidifiers such as this one. I realize the whole system needs to be checked, but when we look at the results for Mystic Air Quality, we realize that there are pockets that are above limit. And so couldn't we address that with?
That may be a solution.
Individual units to take care of it?
That's one of the things the engineers are looking into. We actually have, Jamie Anderson is our HVAC person, and he actually has reports that he's put together for the engineers to take a look at, and will tell them what the humidity levels are on the return side of the system. Air conditioning actually doesn't take humidity out of the air, it's kind of a byproduct of air conditioning, but it's not really designed to do that, so.
Right, but the fact that you've got systems which are covering large portions of the building, and yet you have inconsistent readings within there, indicate that we must need some boosting until we find?
Yeah, we actually put a dehumidifier in one of the classrooms at Northeast Academy. And even with that dehumidifier, which is empty every morning, we've still had humidity levels in that classroom of up to eighty-eight percent, I think was the highest that I saw, with the dehumidifier running, so.
And so you believe that this is because of the way that the drainage is? So is there something that's opened up in the foundation? I mean, has this been a problem since day one? Because the building isn't brand new.
No, I'm told that this has been going on since the building was open.
Question?
I was also going to suggest dehumidifiers. I know we just live up the street, and this is the bane of living in coastal New England, who are going to have humidity, and it's something we have to take into consideration, even in this room, because I can't breathe. So humidifiers also have a little dial, like ours is set, so if it comes over forty-eight percent, ours kicks off.
Yep, thank you.
You can have them dump it right out the window.
Thank you, question. Rita?
No, go ahead.
No, please. We have feedback on our microphones, I am wondering.
Yeah, yes, sir, we can fix that.
Thank you.
My concern, and I've gotten this from quite a few people, is whether or not there's any black mold. When you find the mold, I guess there are different types of mold. So is there black mold?
The report from Mystic Air specifically stated that no black mold or toxic mold was found in any of the samples that were taken.
Okay. And is it possible to go back to the original architectural drawings when that school? Because they're the same drawings as Katherine Konaski. But Katherine Konaski's not having these issues. So basically, it's more the topography of the land, and?
That's a suspicion.
Right. I mean, when Freeman Hathaway was there, and my children went there, it was the same thing. And the fact that the architects didn't take into account that when they built that, put in a basement or put in a four-foot crawl space, because it's on a slab, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it really goes back to the original drawings and the way this was built.
Yes, that's exactly what the engineering firm, Fosse O'Neil, will be looking at. They can determine exactly what's going on there.
Yeah, and it's really such a shame, because they knew that from the beginning. I mean, the playground always had water on it when my children were there. I mean, it's just been.
Well, the playgrounds now don't drain either.
They what?
The playgrounds behind that school don't drain very well now.
No, yeah.
We added a couple of swings, a couple of swings to the early childhood playground last year or the year before, and we couldn't get our bobcat in there. It was so wet, we couldn't finish the job as timely as we would have liked to, because it was too wet, too muddy.
But I'm all for having the dehumidifiers put in place as soon as possible, just as, you know, at least like a Band-Aid.
Yeah, it may, it may come to adding some sort of dehumidification to the system.
To the whole system.
Again, that'll be.
Sort of an industrial, I mean, to search the building.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate how responsive you and your team has been, that this is not a situation that obviously has happened for a long time, and that you have been able to respond very quickly once it was, once it was brought to your attention. So thank you very much to your team, and I know that this is going to be an ongoing, kind of like the lead testing, this is going to be an ongoing thing. And it's too sad, really sad, that, you know, it's a ten-year-old building, and we're dealing with this.
One of the, one of the good things is that the time of year now will actually bring the humidity down, because the heat is on in the evenings, in the daytimes. So we've had humidity levels down, I've seen all the way down to thirty-two percent, which might be a little too dry for some of us. So it's driving, the heat is driving the humidity down in the building.
The drainage from the roof, what, does it come down, and the gutter just ends at the end of the building, keeping view?
No, they're under, they're under, no, they're underground drainage system.
How far do they run from the building?
They run out to the back of the property, beyond the building. That was checked, that was one of the first things that we checked when we started looking in more depth at this, at this issue. We were actually, we had techs up on the roof in the heavy rainstorms, making sure that the drains were draining, and then checking to make sure they were working properly.
It solved the problem at our house.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anything else?
I'll pick up the next child.
Thank you.
All right, so we're now on to committee reports. Lee, for policy?
Policy continues to meet. We will be talking today about first readings today. And I think that we have someone who's going to talk to us about that.
Yes, thank you for waiting, Denise, I appreciate that. And curriculum, no reports? Finance and facility?
We haven't met since the last meeting.
Okay, awesome. Okay, both, you'll be meeting soon?
Yes.
Awesome. Learn?
Yes, we had a meeting last Thursday, I have another one on Friday. We had a presentation from the Learn Director of the Office of Innovation and Development, which is Jack Cross, he was a former superintendent at Clinton. And our focus is on the Ocean Avenue Learning Academy, which will offer districts a school for students with highly complex needs, as well as a Diagnosis and Wellness Center. There's been some asbestos found, so things have been pushed back a little bit. We're hoping maybe the end of November, beginning of December, it'll open, because there is such a need for a waiting list, and it couldn't happen sooner. There are some new partnerships that Learn has with the National Coast Guard Academy Museum, the new one that hopefully will be built, their educational programming, their international academy partnership with China. They're focusing quite a bit on regionalism, and we had a, the beginnings of a regional transportation study. Unfortunately, Groton, we have a five-year contract, so, with our bus company, so we wouldn't be part of the initial phases, but hopefully something will happen, at least for special education.
Thank you. And we, I was not at the Board of Ed, Town Council, RTM liaison meeting. Jay, were you there?
No.
I was there.
Lee, were you there?
I don't really, somebody took.
No, I know we had a minute, okay.
But no, it was good. We didn't have anybody from City.
Okay.
So I'll see if I can get somebody at City to come and visit our meetings.
Okay, and our next one is November the first?
Seventh.
Seventh, I think it is. Okay. Trails and liaison?
Trails, I haven't been able to catch up with them again, but I will eventually.
Okay, and Groton Scholarship?
And scholarship is always looking for donations and new scholarships.
Okay. And that we're also in the, still in the process of doing the teachers' negotiations? With negotiation committee? And so I'm now going to move on to action items. This is the consent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda. So move? Can I have a second?
Second.
Cut, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, abstain, motion has carried. The school board would like to say thank you to Applebee's Restaurant for the four hundred and fifteen dollar donation to the Groton Public Schools for school supplies. And also, a big thank you to the Mystic Women's Club, who made a donation of five hundred dollars to the Food Service Department. And now we're going to move on to new business. Rosemary, would you be willing to read the motion for number one, please?
I'd be delighted. The motion is to approve as first reading of Policy P six one seven two point three, preschool, special education.
Can I have a second, please?
Second?
Can we have discussion? And welcome, how are you?
Good evening, thank you. I'm fine, thank you.
So this policy that we have in front of us, I'm assuming, since you have now sat in front of a microphone, that you are going to describe and discuss for us this new policy?
Sure.
I'm just making a leap.
So the special education preschool policy is a new policy that we have not had in the past, so that's why you don't see anything crossed out. This is a policy that outlines our procedures regarding our preschool students with special needs, who are referred to the district through either birth to three or through parents or daycare programs in the local community. The program, the policy also addresses the district's responsibility under Child Find. Child Find is included in federal law of IDEA, and it requires districts to locate, evaluate, and identify any students in their district who may have a disability and require special education services. Our district carries out or implements Child Find for our preschool children with our Early Childhood Assessment Team. It's a pretty dynamic team of a full-time speech and language pathologist and a full-time special ed teacher, who actually used to both work for birth to three. And they work very closely with our birth to three liaison, as well as local daycare centers, nursery schools, and parents to offer free screenings to children who may be at risk developmentally. And then, obviously, an individual evaluation if they feel the child may have a disability. They also coordinate the child's enrollment in a preschool program if the child qualifies. They hold the planning and placement team meeting at the receiving school. They conduct visits, parents get to meet the new teacher, and they walk the parent through all aspects of the IEP, which is really beneficial, because this is the parent's first opportunity or first chance working with the school district and learning about the individual education plan and the process to develop it. So it's a very collaborative approach, and they do a really nice job. Our preschool programs, as many of you know, have a fifty-fifty ratio of non-disabled peers or typical peer role models and students with special needs. And we do implement all eight steps in the policy related to developing the IEP, organizing transportation, maintaining records, filing state reports, and ensuring a smooth transition from the community programs or the home program to the school program.
And while we usually have regulations, we actually added an addendum of brochure that goes out on Child Find that really specifies the details of how this all works.
I'm unsure, but you said this one, one second, Gretchen, and then after. Is that, was this, is this just required through the state for us to have a policy and procedure? Why?
It's recommended by CAE.
Okay. Just, just wanted to make sure that we know why we're doing it, Gretchen.
Okay, I think this is marvelous, and one of the most important things our schools can do is reach our youngest members. My question is, how do we support the typical peers? If you have one that's in there that probably is above level in reading and writing, are they going to be given what they need as well through this program?
Okay, so I'm going to stop the conversation, in that this is, we're here really kind of talking about the policy, not necessarily how we do the program.
I was just trying to figure out what reverse mainstream role model.
You could bring this back to us, you're deep.
Right.
I would also just like, you know, this, this thing that you see here is a three try, whatever it's called, and Denise, you came up with that. This is, and it's everywhere, right?
Yes, we, that's our Child Find brochure that advertises the services that the district provides, and we do ask local pediatricians, the public library, places in the community where parents are likely to see the brochure. We have them posted in all of our schools and the foyers, so that parents are aware of how to access the services.
Any other questions or discussion about the policy? Hearing them, all those in favor of the first reading of Policy P six one seven two dash three, preschool, special education, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried. Lee, would you please be willing to read the motion?
Sure, I'll go if I can find it, yes.
The motion.
Discussion and possible action regarding the first reading of Policy P five one two five dot one one, health medical records, attachment eight.
The motion.
The motion to approve of a first reading.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Katrina has seconded it? All right, are you here for this as well?
I am.
Aren't we lucky?
I am.
So I coordinate the nursing services with the VNA and our school nursing supervisor, Leah Hendricks. And this policy indicates that we comply with the HIPAA requirements that govern the privacy and protected health information in children's health records. The policy also addresses the educational records, and that act is governed by FERPA. And in the pupil personnel office, we have the official copy of children's records who have a disability, either through special education or Section 504. And this policy indicates that those records are confidential, and they are protected under FERPA. So those records are only released with written consent from the parent. The last paragraph of the policy indicates that the district seeks reimbursement through Medicaid for students who are eligible. And what that means is that students who receive a service through their IEP or 504 plan that's deemed medically related, that includes counseling, social skills, speech and language therapy, OT, PT, and transportation, special transportation, are eligible to have those services reimbursed through federal Medicaid program. And we work with a vendor who provides a software program that the teachers who teach those subjects, OT, PT, speech, school psychologists and social workers, and transportation, they submit or they log those services in the program or the portal. And our vendor works with the Department of Social Services for the district to receive reimbursement for those services. And that reimbursement is included annually in our budget.
And that reimbursement is included annually in our budget, under revenue generated for the town. Participation in the Medicaid program used to be voluntary for districts. This is the first year that it's required for every district. And the policy indicates that we cooperate and we, we work collaboratively to be sure that the students' medical records are protected by HIPAA and FERPA with our vendor whose compuclaim.
Any other comments?
I just have a quick one. At the Learn Board meeting, we just approved a policy, the student records confidentiality policy, and it prompted a discussion that the records follow the student. So anybody that's enrolled in a Learn program, then the, all the records go back to the district. Are those the records that are kept for 50 years? I mean, isn't there a time period that we have to keep these records for 50?
There's a, there's a document in the Library of Congress that specifies for different types of records, how long they're required to be retained. The medical records through Medicaid are required to be retained for six years. The special education records are required to be maintained for six years after the student turns 21, or graduates with a high school diploma. So we have a process that we go through annually to, you know, collect the records of the students who have left us within that time period. We post an ad in the newspaper, so that parents can come in and claim the record if they'd like before they're destroyed. But our records are six years after the child turns 21 or graduates.
Thank you, that's a great question, thank you.
Just clarification, so the 50-year time period is waived, is gone?
I think that refers to transcripts and general education. Especially transcripts.
This is special ed records?
Yeah. Transcripts are retained for quite a long time.
Yeah, I think it's 50 years.
I think so too.
Fitch Middle had huge boxes, right?
It's like tomes. Okay, any more discussion on this policy? Hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the first reading of Policy P 5125-11, Health and Medical Records, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Is this different than the one that came out? All right, Rita, would you be willing to read the motion for number four?
Yes. To approve the appointment of committees.
Oh, wait a second.
Oh, you know what, excuse me.
I need number three.
Board meeting schedule.
Excuse me, it is slightly different.
Okay, I need number three.
We made one little mistake.
This one doesn't count, and this one does.
So the, so the, but maybe finish reading the motion.
That one doesn't count. Number three, the motion is to approve the 2019 board meeting schedule.
Can I have a second, please? Got Gretchen? Discussion, please.
The one, the one issue that Joan and I found today was October, the first COW meeting needs to be October 15th, because the 14th is in fact Columbus Day. Other than that, it's the exact same one, and so, as you, you can sort of walk your way through this. Essentially, it's the same, same format, like in December, we have a first COW meeting, and then we move the, the board meeting itself to the third, third Monday, so as to avoid Christmas.
If you wanted to also, I think sometimes we have the Learn meeting is the second Thursday of the month. Sometimes we put that on here, because underneath, for information.
Oh, oh, okay.
If you wanted to add that, it's always the second Thursday of the month.
The Learn Board.
Mm-hmm.
Learn Board, second Thursday.
Yep.
Of the month, okay.
And also, Lee, can I just do one more description? So Lee brought to my attention, just make sure that we're not confused, the second and third Mondays of the month, there is a five o'clock, or could be, the five o'clock meetings for either the finance and facility and curriculum and student data. And that's noted for information purposes. But what's up top is, is that, this is part of our discussion that we had, was that we have two committee of the whole meetings, we're trying to kind of keep information, like for curriculum and school data in one, and then finance and facilities in the other, so that we're not cross-referencing. So that's just, just so that we're not going back to the old pilot, that we're staying with our current format. Katrina?
Can I go to learn meetings? Is that why you're putting them on here?
Pardon me?
You wanted to note Learn Board meetings?
Yep, just like the other ones.
Does that mean we can go to those?
The Groton Scholarship Fund, the town, city council.
Yes. Does that mean that we?
It's a public meeting.
Can look, can go to the Learn Board meetings? Is that why you want it on here, or is it just?
Um, yes, you could go.
Okay, I was just curious why the point of putting it here was, if we, but we can go.
Well, just like the Groton Scholarship Fund, we have one representative that attends that. Anybody could go to it.
Okay.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the Board of Education scheduled meetings for 2019, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried.
Could I explain this year's schedule, we have a little problem. And if I could explain it now, just to see exactly how I made the mistake.
Okay.
If you look at this year's schedule, 2018, you'll, you'll notice that in December, it says December 10th, COW canceled. The problem is, we meant to say December 10th, ten spaces over, COW canceled, which is exactly what we did for next year. You see that?
Yes, say that again.
So Joan and I were racking our minds today to figure out, why the heck did we cancel the December 10th meeting? Because we didn't mean to. So what I'd like to propose, when we get to the future meeting business, is that we in fact have a COW meeting, it would be a special one now, on December 10th. We move, as, as is stated, the December 17th will be the board meeting, which we'll have here. And so if you just sort of scrunch that COW canceled over, you'd, you'd see the mistake I made.
So basically, as always, in December, the Board of Education would have two meetings, not three.
Yeah, one COW, and then.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
So I just, I thought it would be helpful to explain that. Took us about a half hour to figure out what the heck we did. So when we get, when we get there, maybe we could both have that meeting. Because it has to be a special meeting.
Well, it just has to, I think you just have to note it as a special meeting. We don't have to vote on it, it could just, it just says December 10th, special meeting.
So we'll do it, we'll do it, we'll, we'll.
Where will it be?
It would be in.
December 10.
Room 11, in the gallery.
Central office.
Central office, gallery.
Katrina, would you be willing to read number four?
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of committees to name the new middle school, to select the themes of the new elementary schools, and to develop a collaboration plan with the Groton Public Library.
Can I have a second?
Second.
So this was, this came out of our retreat, the development of these committees. There are not to be of, of one committee that's going to do all of those three things. And we pushed, I got, I got you, Katrina. And we, and we did state a couple of names, but we wanted to just kind of make sure that people knew that we were doing this, and we're moving, and we're moving forward. Katrina?
I guess I have a problem with how this is worded. I feel like it should be three separate motions. So should I amend, can I make an amendment to make it into three separate motions?
Absolutely.
Unless there's a reason it was written this way that I can understand.
I, I think it was just a matter of saving space, would be my guess.
Okay.
So absolutely.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to consider each of these.
Separate.
Topics separately.
So Mr., how do we do this? Because it's a totally different motion, and we would have to, then we have to create.
Withdraw.
Withdraw, withdraw this current motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the current motion that I just made.
Okay. And now, can we vote on the withdrawal of the motion that's on the floor?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, abstain, motion has carried.
Did Katrina need a second?
She already had the second, she had Katrina's, yeah. Yeah. Katrina had Gretchen.
If you like, I could say, the first new motion, Joan, is going to be discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a committee to name the new middle school.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Can I have any discussion?
Was that appropriate, him making the motion?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried. So.
We want to associate some names with that. We're talking about the naming.
Naming. In terms of people to go to that, do we need to put the people? I don't think we need to put the, we're establishing the committee, and we're going to find the people.
Okay, and we'll pop you.
Right.
Yes.
So the second motion.
Was, is to develop a.
Discussion and possible action, blah, blah, blah.
To select the themes of a new, of the new elementary school. Can I have a second to that? Rosemary?
I saw her first.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Can I? We need to change the wording on that. It's not to select the themes, it's to create a committee to select the themes.
Yeah, I think he said blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I know that was the intention, I just didn't hear committee.
Sorry, that wasn't articulate.
Sorry, I know there are people that like things done correctly.
Nope.
I am with them.
You would like that, recommend.
All right, so that motion has carried? Okay, so the third motion is to approve the appointment of a committee to develop a collaborative plan with the Groton Public Library.
If there's a name for it, to look into, what's my name on it, Jay, the one card system?
I, I think it's how to do the collaborative, and I think it's part of that collaborative is that you're going to, that they're going to do that. Because if we just say that, then that's all that they're going to be able to do.
Not only that, but we, we get some other people want a collaborative.
Okay. But yes, that's absolutely a big one, part of that. All right, and second, thank you, Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor to approve a committee to develop a collaborative relationship or plan with the Groton Public Library, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried. All right.
Can you pass them on that side, too? Need one for Susan. Is it different than what's in here?
Yes, because I think, I think he had a conversation with, so I'm actually going to, I'm going to read the motion.
Okay.
And then Dr. Grinear, after it's seconded, then we'll have discussion about why the motion looks different than the one that's in the packet, okay? So the motion is, a resolve of the Board of Education or the Town of Groton approve the following project. Design and construction of a new approximately 155,000 square foot consolidated middle school to be situated on the town-owned Merritt site known as the former Merritt Farm. And it has the PIN number, and I will, I will mess that up, but that's on, it's in the written form, between Ello Grosso Technical High School and Robert E. Fitch High School, and replacement of the existing Carl C. Cutler Middle School at 160 Fishtown Road, and the existing Westside Middle School at 250 Brennigie Avenue, with two new pre-K through grade five elementary schools, each of approximately 75,000 square feet. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
In order for the town to put forward a referendum, which is going to be scheduled, if it goes through on December 11th, the, the original language that was, that the voters voted on in December of 2016, was to renovate the elementary school. And the bond council insisted that this be the language, that the voters would approve, the big words here are new, to new pre-K through grade five. This, this exact motion is going to go, if it's approved, to the town council tomorrow night. Town council is going to take action on it. It will then go to the RTM, and then off to, essentially to a referendum on December 11th, where, where the voters would be asked. If, if the motion fails, well, if the referendum fails, the schools would still be built. It's, it's just that they would be renovated as new, and as the board knows, the most cost-effective solution, which gives us the greatest value, is to build new schools. But that's not what the voters voted on in, in November, nearly two years ago. So this is the language that the town council has requested, and the bond council has insisted.
Katrina?
I, Dr. Grinear, I'd like you to, for the public, state the reimbursement rates, and why now it is a better reimbursement rate to build new, which was before, was the opposite. So now, I think, Lee, for Carl Cutler, the school on that property would be 80%?
Yeah, the reimbursement rate remains the same, 80%.
But for the second school?
For, for the second school, the reimbursement rate is, is actually 10% less. It's actually 47%. It's not the reimbursement rate.
I thought it was 57.
It's 57 if you renovate, 47 if you build new. But when the architects did the estimate, they realized that because we could build it a year earlier, that, that in itself would, would save $2.5 million. And then when we looked at the details, when the architects looked at the details of the Westside site, we realized there were some structural problems that they were going to have to work around. Because to, to convert a, a middle school into an elementary school, some of the bathrooms have bathrooms and so forth, it really proved to be quite expensive to do it that way. So even though we're getting, technically, the town would be getting less of a reimbursement rate, the total cost to the town for that project would be less. Hence, it's more cost-effective.
And wasn't there a number associated with this referendum?
Yes.
And that, and that doesn't need to be put on here?
No. The 184,500,000 dollar, that's already approved, that, that, we are actually, in fact, on Wednesday, Mr. Kilpatrick and I are going to Hartford, because we're going to, we're going to file under the new system, starting to draw down on that. That money has essentially been deposited, and we're drawing down on it. So the money won't change. It's just purely the question of, are we authorized to build new?
Okay, so why is it that we have to talk about the middle school in there? Why isn't it just about the elementary schools?
I think be, because this is a, a rewording of the, of the fundamental referendum question that the voters voted on in, in November of 16.
I don't believe it said on the Merritt site. Because we didn't know that.
Right, we didn't know that at the time.
Now, it's, now it's been determined, yeah, so this is, this is as, as, as clear an intention that we want the voters to know as possible.
And also, can you explain to the voters why we would save $2.5 million, because we could build the schools a year early?
If, if we, if we needed to renovate the schools, obviously, the new middle school would have to be totally finished before we could even begin to work on, on the two existing middle schools. But if we could build new, the architects intend to, to build the new elementary schools adjacent to the current middle schools. Therefore, we could start the construction project about a year earlier, and the, the increased cost of, of waiting for that year, or, or potentially more, resulted in millions of dollars.
I, I think that's really important, to somehow make the public aware of this.
Yeah. We, we have a Groton 2020 Political Action Committee, we're not, I actually spoke to the Elections Commission, and we, we can't, we can't. we, we can't, we can't advocate, nor can they, nor could they advocate, even in the question to say, would you like to build new, which is more cost-effective? Uh, we can't do any of that, but, but we have a political action committee and so we'll.
You need to have the background.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Katrina?
So is, is this the question or is this the text?
This is, this is the text, uh, my understanding is, this is the text to change the ordinance.
So what's the question gonna be?
The, the, I, I think this is gonna be very close to the question, to, to design the new middle school and, and build to, design and construct the new middle school on the Merritt property and, and.
So they're done with amending the first thing and all that stuff?
They're not, I, I don't think.
Okay, so this is explanatory text, the question itself will be determined by the town council?
I don't know this is explanatory text, but yes, the question will definitely be determined by the town council.
Okay, because this is just, we're approving this project that is defined in this paragraph.
Yes.
That's it. We are not determining how the question is.
That's right.
None of that stuff.
That's not our, that's not our job.
Once upon a time, the board approves, renovate as new, because that's what we thought.
Okay, and when, when, when does the town, um, has there been a public hearing on?
That's gonna be tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow they're gonna vote to change the ordinance, then they'll have a public hearing, actually then it has to go to the RTM, uh, and then, uh, on to, uh, the public hearing and then to the referendum.
So the public hearing isn't tomorrow?
Yes.
The first has to go to the RTM?
I thought that, that tomorrow's the 23rd, I thought that John Vert, uh, last week told us that it was gonna be a very big.
It's on the agenda tomorrow for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's when we will be able to see the actual question that will be on the ballot, tomorrow?
Potentially.
I, I don't, I don't, Katrina, I'm sorry, I, if I was to say something and it could be wrong. Um, I don't know when, when, when we're gonna be able to see the question or the text. For tonight's purposes, the Board of Ed.
They're gonna vote on this tomorrow night.
Well, I'm not sure what this is.
Okay, let me, let me, let me try. For, for, for the purposes of being able to move this project forward, the, the state, the town needs to show the state to go to the referendum, that the Board of Ed supports this project. That's all we're doing tonight.
As new.
So we have to re-support the project?
As new.
As new.
Okay.
Because there's, there's been a change and does the board still accept this project with this change? That's really, that's really what it, it is for tonight.
Okay.
Jay?
Okay. So, um, yeah, just so there's, to, to make it clear, there's a ordinance the town council is going to pass and then there's a referendum question which will reference that ordinance and that's not our concern. Our concern is to approve the project and then the town council does what they do. We're not writing the ordinance, we're not writing the question. Just for those that are following along at home, one or, one or two people. Now, um, mea culpa, um, I questioned at a meeting why it was written in such a way that we would have to go back later and do this all over again and, um, just to make it clear, so the state regulations at the time that the referendum were passed were that we had to renovate to new.
That's right.
The rules changed at the state level after the referendum was approved. And so that's why we're going back to show that, that we're authorizing it to be new. I had raised a question with the town manager about whether this is still flexible enough that if there were a change in Hartford to the administration, uh, which one way or the other there's going to be, uh, whether this is flexible enough, say they decide, you know, we've decided that it is less expensive, but apparently the ba- the bond council is insisting that we go one way or the other. They're not allowing us to be flexible and they're not allowing us to include a language that would lead the voter to think that this might be the less expensive because it's, it's more about value. But I think one of the good things about this is we are not inheriting the plumbing, the 50.
Lead.
Year-old plus plumbing that is in these old buildings, we're getting a new building. We are not inheriting the PCBs, we are not inheriting the asbestos. We are not inheriting all of the, the baggage that comes with using an old foundation in an old building. Somebody even said you have to scan the bricks and you might have to remove sections of brick and then rebuild that when you're, when you're building, renovate to new. So this obviously is a, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, if the referendum goes down, we automatically revert to renovate to new and the town is at risk potentially for what the state is gonna reimburse and what they're not. So that.
I don't know that part.
Well, my understanding is the 100 million from the, the, the state and the 84 and a half million from the taxpayers, that won't be threatened. What will be threatened is, we have to do all the things that you said, remove the P, you don't get a nickel more than 184.5 million dollars.
Right.
Hence, if you'd have to do all those things, you're gonna get less building. So the people at Northeast Academy know that they have essentially two-thirds of a gymnasium. That, that's the sort of, that's the sort of thing that we, we would be forced to make, or the, actually, the permanent building committee would be forced to make. So we, we, we believe building new would be by far, give us the best value for our dollar. It would give us the best buildings for our dollar, although the dollars won't change.
Gretchen?
Would it be possible to take it and turn it into two questions?
We don't, this is not our deal.
This is not debatable.
All we have to do.
So I can't?
All we have to do tonight is to say, we know that the, the project has changed from renovate to going to new and we, as a board, supports this, that's what this motion here is for. Any more discussion? We just need to make sure that people know, one second. We also need to make sure that people understand that we had a very lengthy conversation about this conversation um, and about the buildings and about sort of where we are last week. So we look like we are with, with the town manager and with, um, the gentleman who's in charge of the construction project. So we look like we might be passing this through really quickly, but we also had a very intense conversation with the, with the people. Jay and then Gretchen.
Just because.
Good form, please.
Just because, um, there have been so many things where we find ourselves painted into a corner. Is it necessary to say two new pre-K through grade five elementary schools? Does that take away flexibility for the use of that building?
I am not willing to change this motion if this kind of came from the town attorney and the town manager.
Oh, this came from the town attorney?
It came from the bond council.
From the bond council. So I don't wanna change this at all. And really, once again, people, we are just saying, we get it, the project has changed and we are, we're approving of it. It's not our job to, I think, to get into the weeds.
Question.
I gotta have Gretchen, I have.
Let's let her.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor that, with a motion that's on the floor, please don't have me reading, because it's really long. Um, for the motion that's on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, motion has carried. Rosemary, do you have anything to talk about in terms of what you have done?
Yes, I.
The Board of Ed?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please.
Um, somewhere. I have attended the Sound Community Services Board committee meetings the past month. I've also attended GASP and, um, it is, um, the regular meeting as, as well as, um, sat at the Groton Fall Festival for their, um, table to dispense information and give out plastic jewelry. And, um, I also attended the Martin Luther King Dinner where I got another injection of hope for the future. And I love this every year because I need that. And I attended the Safe Futures 4K Walk at the Crystal Wall with sore feet after working at Yale.
Of course you did, yes.
Lee? I went to the Martin Luther King Scholarship Trust, it was better every year, it was wonderful. And then on Saturday, I sat in a cold bleacher seat and watched the bands. And it was phenomenal.
Including Addie. Including Addie.
Were you there, Addie?
She was performing.
Dissentify her. Rita? Um, I've had a lot of conversations and people have contacted me about the December 11th referendum, um, about the proposed Groton charter revisions and also, um, the Northeast Academy concerned parents contacted me about the, um, problems there. So that's about, and I was, I gave up my seat at the Martin Luther King Dinner because they had so many people that wanted to attend, they needed.
700.
Yeah, they needed people to give up their seat, their tickets and we had negotiations anyway with our teachers, so I did that instead.
Katrina?
But I'm gonna watch it on Channel 19.
The only other thing I did was, went to, I was invited up to Fitch during the, um, Start With Hello Week and partici- not participated, but helped out in the, um, Mix It Up Day in the cafeteria. That was really cool. And I had a question for Dr. Ginear, do you want me to say that till the end?
Sure.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking her. You probably don't want the question frankly, but.
Well, I mean, if, if it's a question that you need to direct to Dr. Ginear, you can do that offline or if it's something that you want, um, to be as part of the, the record, you are welcome.
Part of the record and also make sure I'm saying, I'm asking the right question because I.
Okay.
Um, back in June, we had you and Kathy Wilson come in and there was discussion about the, um, lottery.
Yes.
Magnet lotteries, um, the preference priorities? And there was some confusion about that and I understand because of the funding, we have two different ways we have to do lotteries or one way we have to, but then another way we haven't quite figured out yet, at least that was my impression from the meeting. Um, and I have a note to myself that you guys, we're gonna come back in late fall so that we could discuss those preference priorities and be more part of that. Do you remember that, Rita?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So can we put that on the schedule? Because I'm very, very interested in that.
It, it is there.
It's what?
Actually, it's already on this, I think it's actually already on an, an agenda.
No, no.
So Kathy will be coming?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ca- Kathy will come in.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Committee of the whole meeting near you, coming soon.
And if I hadn't said anything, it wouldn't be.
No, it's, it's been on there.
Okay.
I was delighted to, I did, to, uh, out of district, chunk or tree. So it was really fun seeing how other school districts do their thing. It was kind of fun to be involved with that. But the kids were cute. The trumps were cute too. I'm getting a lot of phone calls about northeast humidity, obviously. Sometimes I just, I'm gonna give up walking around the block. The other one is some parents are starting to go, oh, we might get redistrict. So that's another question that's starting to come up and I've also gotten asked three times, why are we having problems with a new building? So, and most of them I've referred to, let me get to the next COW meeting or let, why don't you call the superintendent's office and they'll direct you to the person who knows.
That's a good plan, thank you Gretchen. Jay?
I also was able to attend the, the beginning of the Martin Luther King Dinner. Unfortunately, we, we did double book ourselves into teacher negotiations that night, so. But, um, I just want to acknowledge, um, Dr. Ackerman's years of, um, assisting with that and organizing and it's a real testament to, uh, to you and also to Dr. Mitchell and, um, and the entire committee. The publisher of the, uh, day was there that evening and, um, uh, it, it was capacity. And people were still coming in and trying to buy tickets unfortunately that night and were being turned away. I, I parked about a half mile away and, and, and hiked in. But anyway, um, unfortunately I missed the, um, the, the marching band due to my day slash night job. But in any event, uh, and that's about it.
I just want to thank everybody who came to the, to the Martin Luther King Dinner, it was fabulous. The, our, our three scholars, Jaden Lehman, Lizette Perez, and Brittany Tassad. And all of the scholars were just electric in their remarks. And I thank everybody for everyone's support and there were 700 people. And Dr. Mitchell keeps saying, I had to really explain what no more attendance means. Oh, 12, $20,000 scholarships and thank you to the community for that. And Ken Hitchings, uh, of the fam- the Hitchings Family Foundation, upped it to four next year and Pfizer matched them.
And Pfizer matched them.
They did, yes, they did.
Wonderful. So, um, speaking, continue to speak, um, about Andrea, um, I just want to lea- read a letter that's sent to, um, her and to, um, actually, uh, myself and to the superintendent. Dear, um, Mrs. Ackerman, congratulations, you have earned CAPE certific- um, Certified Board of Education Member designation. Very few other Connecticut Board of Education members have earned this prestigious honor. With your attendance at numerous CAPE and K, um, CAPE Pass conventions, CAPE workshops and programs and other events, you have acquired a wide variety of skill, knowledge and abilities. This is a great accomplishment and you are to be commended. You have earned the required 20 credit in the areas of board relation policy, curriculum, school finance, school labor, um, labor law and labor relations and board operations. In close is a press release, in, um, in case you would like to use, on behalf of the CAPE Baldwin Media. Um, but your commitment to public education and to children in your community is admirable. Again, congratulations on accomplishing this difficult and time-consuming, um, feat. Um, and it's signed by the executive directors. Um, and so congratulations Andrea. And just, um, I also went to the band concert, um, and I did get to see you and I waved, I don't know why you didn't wave back. Maybe it was because you were a tad busy, um, but, just a little bit, but you guys sounded absolutely amazing and I know I'm biased, but you were the best ones on the field. And, um, but also just remember, um, folks, that we have all those meetings coming up and the CAPE convention for those of us who are going to be, um, attending, um, please contact Joan. I don't know if Joan knows this, but please contact Joan, um, so she can tell you where, because we have also been designated.
We won the award.
We. Joyce, um, contacted, because we won the award for board distinction. And so I don't remember, it's the highest one, I think.
Good.
Um, and, um, but there's like, um, like on Thurs- on the.
Photo op.
There's like a photo op and.
Usually Friday around 5:00.
Yeah.
So where are my teeth?
Where are your teeth?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, motion is carried, it's 8:33.